Sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube. The meeting of the Gaston City Council will come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Tolls?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams? I know who's here. Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
[inaudible] Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. I want to thank you for your blessings, Father. We thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy, motion of all. I pray, Father, that we know your will. We never resist it in any time. Father, I pray your blessings on us. Father, I pray for your wisdom, guidance, knowledge, and discernment as everything comes before this council. Father, I pray that your will is always done. We give you all the thanks and praise. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. [inaudible]
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting that was held December 1st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of November the 22nd, 7th through the December the 3rd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation.
[inaudible]
I didn't have one, I couldn't see it. Give me your hand right here, is that okay?
Okay, is it my?
I just raised it right here, I'll come over there.
You left the key there.
Get the key there, please.
Mayor, we got a key. That key.
We got you fixed up.
I have a proclamation today. Whereas, Tyra?
Tanya.
I'm sorry, I can't see good.
Tanya.
Tanya, I'm sorry. Whereas, Tanya Rene Baker was born to Myrtle Somerville and Roosevelt Creighton on December 8th, 1972, and is a native of Gaston, Alabama. She is a proud mother of four children, Quentin, Gabriel, Byron, and Tyron. Whereas, Tanya's mother was an awful wonderful role model. I know it, can't see with this mask on. Can't see. Now, whereas, Tanya answered God's call to serve his people and received inspiration from beautiful examples set by her mother and prepared a charity Thanksgiving meal for her community in 2014. Whereas, the next year, in spite of experiencing great pain and sadness from the loss of her mother, Tanya preserved and prepared another charity Thanksgiving meal. And whereas, through the partnership with community leaders, Tanya has been able to continue preparing and serving Thanksgiving meals in the years since, including 2020. Tanya's biggest dream is to open a women's and men's shelter and wishes to pursue making this her passion. Therefore, I summon again the Mayor of the City of Gaston to hereby proclaim with the City of Council, proclaim December 8, 2018, as Tanya Rene Baker Day in the City of Gaston, honoring her past and future service to the community and also congratulating her on the occasion of her birthday. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I am very proud to receive this from each and every last one of y'all. And yes, that is my pride. I really want to be able to, not only just feed people, I want to make sure that they are able to have a place or roof over their heads on cold nights, whether it's cold or hot nights. I still want a roof over their head. I want them to be able to be fed. You know, I want, I want everything that they need to be supplied for them. This is my dream, and this is my passion, and God's will, it will happen. Thank you so much.
I think I have a thing for you.
Okay.
It's the key, the seed. I don't know if it fits on a lot.
If it don't fit on a lot.
But anyway, there you go.
Thank you.
We're proud of you for what you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, man. [applause]
Thank you.
We have a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 1137 Brentwood Drive in District 3, and this resolution was tabled for 30 days on November the 3rd. What is the pleasure of the council?
We'll go with the recommendation from the Building Department and ask that we pass the resolution.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Do we have a second?
A second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item, no action by the council is necessary regarding this resolution on 1307 Malone Street in District 3. The nuisance has been abated by the owner. Our next item is a resolution authoring abatement of nuisance on property at 2441 Fairview Road in District 7, and this resolution was tabled for 30 days on November the 3rd. What is the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, at this time, I'd like to ask for additional 30-day table, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition or in favor of a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property at 510 Allen Street in District 1. This is Fay Evans, Randy Jones, Clyde Jones, Fay Edwards, and at all being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in December a year ago. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there a rest in? Is there a rest in? I move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 712 Windsor Street in District 1, Matili Properties LLC in care of Christopher Messer and Emily Messer being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there one speaking favor?
Madam President, this case involves a burned structure. We filed it in July of this year. There've been no improvements, no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
I move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 909 Pennant Street in District 3, Angles Property LLC being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition?
Madam President, this case involves trash and debris. The owner is in the process of cleaning it, and we promise to work with him. I'm going to ask this case to be tabled for 30 days. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Go along with what the Building Department just said, Brian Harbison, and ask for table for 30 days, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1223 South 11th Street, and this is in District 5, Dallin S. Schuler, Terry Hopkins and wife Terry, Terry Hopkins, Dallin S. Schuler and others, subject to mortgage in favor of Dawn Brown and wife Margaret G. Brown, executed by Dallin Schuler, Terry Hopkins and wife Terry Hopkins being the last known owners. Is there anyone who's speaking opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in March of this year. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution abating nuisance on property located at 20 Mitchell Street in District 6, Robert Stapleton and Rights of Redemption of Carol Sue Pettfray being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition?
Yes, ma'am.
If you'll come to the podium and give your name and address, please.
My name is James Pelfrey, and it's for 20 Mitchell Street, Gaston, Alabama.
But what is, what is your actual address?
20 Mitchell Street.
So you're living in this property?
No, I'm not living in it. I was, what I was getting at, I've been in prison for two years. I just got out.
Yes, sir.
My mother's been staying in my house, and she has been letting homeless people, drug addicts, I mean, stay in her backyard, sleeping under the carports, and they have destroyed my house. The yard was a mess, but I got her, she is gone. She's moving in assisted living thing in Collinsville, not to be there. I'm taking full control back of that property, and if you all could, please, just give me a little time, I will have it back, you know, in acceptable conditions soon. I'm just going to have a dumpster right there empty. I've been working on the yard night and day for past two weeks. But this is another problem. I had the backyard stuff cleaned up, right?
Yeah.
I went back over there the night before last. They had been back over there. Everything in my buildings, I got three outbuildings, they had thrown out in the middle of the yard, everything out from under my back patio, thrown out in the yard. And I can't catch them. I mean, they had destroyed the inside of my house.
Outside.
And like I said, I went, I got incarcerated, you know, a couple years ago, and everything I owned was in that house, and they had took. And you, and I never, I asked the police yesterday, I told them to please up the patrols there, or, you know, start watching. But my mom was in a bad state of mind. She has dementia and stuff real bad, and I, there's nothing I could do. I've been gone. When I got home, I started trying to take care of it, and I apologize for the condition of the, the house. I mean, it's unacceptable. I didn't even like it. When I seen it, I started crying. But I had been on foot, you know, trying to get it. Right now, Brian had told me the porches and all the front yard, everything needed to be presentable, you know? Well, I've got it done, spotless. I got one patio on the side I need to cover back up, but everything's going to the dump. I mean, there won't be a tree limb left in the yard if I can help. But I, if, sees be fit, I mean, that's the only thing I have left. And if you could just give me the time to get it together, I will have it done. I mean, I'm stay in touch with Mr. Harbison or Brian Greer.
All right.
I hate, the conditions my mother was living in, it, I can't, it breaks my heart. I can't believe she was staying like that. But no, I mean, I would never have a home that was in that condition. But I will make it right if I just had the time, a little time to do it.
Where do you live at now?
I stay with my girlfriend, my fiancee.
In Gaston?
Yes, sir. Just on, around Sixth Street. And, I mean, I walk over there, I'm fixing to get me another car, stuff I was having the time to. I've been in the hospital twice in the past month. But I was under the assumption, nobody can live there with it condemned like that. Night, you're not supposed to be there at nighttime, right? Okay.
You hadn't got a permit for this piece of property either once the piece of property comes before the City Council, you can't get a permit?
Well, she had a permit hanging on by the door, a building permit. I'm sure it's out of date by now, but could I not renew it? Please, I mean, sir, it's the only property I have, this is the only thing I have left of my name. They, I have lost everything, my career and my family and this little house.
I don't know.
I mean, right now, and even with them coming throwing stuff out of my buildings, it still looks 100 times better than it did a week or two ago. I mean, it's not a sore eye, you know, when you drive by, it looks, it's nice.
Could I ask how, how long you, you've been working on it, or how, how long you've been able to work on it?
Just a couple weeks, at, at the most. I would have, I was under the impression that just the property was condemned, the yard, for the yard being messy and stuff. I didn't know that they, that condemned the house too. I had misunderstood. One of, I get the Brian's confusion, to him and saying for Mr. Harbison, or, but I didn't know that condemned the house also. And before I went, got incarcerated, I had talked to them about trying to clean it up then. I seen what she was doing, she started hoarding real bad and just keeping everything. And he gave me a chance, he told me if I get cleaned up, so if, you know, that he would work with me. Well, I cleaned it up and everything, well, I got incarcerated, and she went back to it. So, you know, I get out, and this is what I come to.
Well, that's a tough situation, man. I'm sorry you're going through that. I just want you to know.
Well, I appreciate it.
Our hands are basically tied.
If you, if, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but are you finished?
No. I mean, you're saying your hands are basically tied.
Well, I want Mr., Mr. Harbison to speak, and so if you'll just have a seat for, I'm saying, are you, are you finished telling us about your, about the house and the yard?
Almost. If you, I was just going to say, and Mr. Harbison, I know he probably tried to work with my mother and stuff, but I mean, I got it, I got it, I mean, that woman was not in her right mind. She didn't, she shouldn't have been staying by herself. But as far as them saying there was no running water and stuff, there was. I don't know where that came from. What it was, is I bought the sharp bites and stuff to fix the plumbing with before I got incarcerated, and I had some of it left undone. Well, they crawled up under the house and got the fittings I bought and took them back to Marvin's and got the money from them. Okay? And lied to me on the phone while I'm in jail and told me they fixed it. Well, I get out, and I had called DHR to come try to help me do something about my mother, and they said they had a report, there was no running water, and I said, that's not true, because the day I got home, I kind of checked it. And the water was running, they were just cutting it off at the meter because where they took the fittings and stuff I bought, it left a pipe undone under the house. They were just turning on and let water run on the ground. But he come and checked the faucet, outside faucets and stuff, and seen the water was running, and so that should have been off the report. I mean, I'm sure we can check with the water board. Her service has not been disconnected due to not paying the bill or anything. So she did have water, and the power was never interrupted until the city interrupted it. But that's all, you know, this is her state of mind and stuff. I apologize for any problems it's caused. But I, I would hope that I would get the chance to say, it's the only thing I have. I mean, if you look at my record while I was incarcerated, you know, they took my home, my cars, everything, my career, and they're just saying, this is a better season, that seems like I'd have a chance to say.
Mr. Harbison, please, and then I can let you discuss, Councilman Cannon.
Madam President, we filed this case in February. There was a building permit taken out February the 24th. There've been no improvements to the house. There may have been some cleanup done in the yard, but there have been no improvements. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Mr. Harbison, before you have a seat, when, when were these pictures taken?
It's dated on the, the form now, I think, maybe five or six days ago.
December 2nd is what the form said.
When was it?
December the 2nd. So, six days ago.
Okay. Okay.
Were they taken at the front and the back, cause?
You have any reason for him not to say those?
No, I didn't say anything. I mean, I got videos I made the other night when I was there in the yard cleaning it up.
Two years.
Trying to show what they had come back done.
Been out two years. Sir, how long did you say you've been out of prison or jail?
I got out in June, but I've been.
Of this year?
Yes, ma'am. But I've been in and out of the hospital the past two, three months since August. I've been, I call it toxic poison. It gave you hepatitis A, this bad bacteria, in fact, well, it shut my liver down, shut my kidneys down. So, it kind of put me on my back for a minute. But those pictures right there, that is of the carport on side of the house, which is in an enclosed area. And they had just took the tarts and stuff down that bought it, where you couldn't see it from the front. And there ain't a thing in there that can't be thrown in the dump or burnt and got rid of.
Do you remember?
I know it seems like I've been out since June, you know, that's a long time, but when you come out with nothing and, and the help in the condition I was in, it's difficult. I know time moves on.
You, do you remember, let me take this mask off, do you remember you and the girlfriend coming down there about four years ago? And we, me and you, her talk?
I told you then, I couldn't do nothing with my mother. Remember?
Yeah, that was, that was four years ago. Do you agree with me on that? Me and you had that talk?
That she was having problems? Yes, sir, I do agree with you, and I'm not saying that you're wrong in any way. My mother was a hand, she was hoarding and picking up anything she could and letting any homeless drug addict that she could find stay there. I couldn't stop it. Well, I stopped it. Now, she would never lay back at that problem.
You remember when I was, I was just out walking the district that day and?
Are you Brian Greer?
No, no, sir. But me and you talked that day, I was walking the district, and I walked down there and you stopped me, and I told you who I was, and we had a pretty long conversation. You said, yeah, I'm going to make sure I get this done. I told you four years ago, I said, something's got to be done here. And, you know, nothing's really been done.
I, I tried without, I don't swear that stuff, but with everything in me, I told you that day, you seen what I was dealing with. Because they, they, we were standing in the backyard, and she coming around there talking to us towards the end of our conversation. I mean, if you, if I went and picked up a bucket and tried to throw it away, it was broke out pieces, she wouldn't let you. She'd have to save it. But I understand that, and I apologize. But once again, I don't see why that would take away, you know, that was my home and stuff. When I got in trouble, I put the deed back in her name. And, but I got a labor lien on it, you know, I, I've got more money in the house than she does, and, but I couldn't, what can I have done with her? I mean, right, it took, I begged DHR, it took me from the time I got out of prison until now, DHR couldn't even do nothing with her, because you know what they said? Is, well, if she chooses to live that way, then it's her choice. And I said, there's no way you can give that woman a competency test or something to tell me she's in her right mind, because nobody can sleep with bugs that, you couldn't live in those conditions.
All right, sir, we, we got, we've got your, we've got your point, and so now it's in the hands of the, of the council.
Yes, sir. I understand where you're coming from. You can go ahead and sit down. I understand where you're coming from, but really and truly on this right here, all you have is a, you said you have a labor lien on it, that's all you have. You don't have any rights to this property.
I do have the rights to it. I've been there, paid $20,000 cash and got the deed to it in 2014 or 13, or 17, eight, when she got sick the first time. And I do have legal rights to it.
Okay, you don't, you don't have a building permit that's in your name, and we don't have any way of you being able to work on this piece of property, because you can't get a building permit now once it comes before the City Council. If you're caught on that premises, working without a building permit, somebody's going to call the law to you. That's, you know, your neighbors, we've had a bunch of complaints about this property.
Of course you have. Look at the language, sir.
You've, I'm sorry, sir, you're.
Yeah. You're out of order.
It's my time.
I'm out of order, I apologize.
And four years ago, we had a conversation when I was down there with you, and, you know, I'm, I'm sorry that you got incarcerated, you know, but four years ago, we could have did something here. You know, I think we could have did more than we've done, and you don't have any rights to this piece of property, except you said you have a, a lien on it. I don't see all my stuff. It's, this is Robert Stapleton, and in Redemption of Carol Sue Pelfrey, and that's the only thing I see on my stuff that I have, and I get all my stuff from the Building Department, and they're supposed to check all this thoroughly, so I don't have any thing I can do. My hands is tied since you can't get a building permit, and I don't want to see you get put back in jail for being on a piece of property, working without a building permit. There's no power down there, there's no water on the house. I, this is one of these occasions that I wish that.
There's no utilities because he come out.
Sir, sir, you're out of order.
I, I.
You're out of order. Yes, yes.
There's no utilities because he come out.
You've had your chance.
The next time that you, you go out, you go out of order again when I'm speaking, I let you speak, I'm going to request that the President make sure you, you leave, okay? Because I like to finish what I'm saying.
Okay.
Me and you had a conver, me and you had this conversation four years ago. We, I was down there talking with you face to face, nothing's been done. You don't have a building permit in your name, you don't, you said you have a labor lien, I don't know that. There's no power, there's no water. The place looks like it is bad. If these people here could see what I was talking about, they would see how bad. I'm going to move with abate this piece of property.
Do I have a second?
Is that a motion?
Do I get a chance to speak again?
No.
All right, thanks.
Is that a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Oh, I wasn't sure who said what. Do we need a roll call vote?
Do we need a roll call vote on this?
Okay, let's do it. Tolls?
Uh, yes.
Yes. Williams?
Yes.
Worthy?
No.
Back?
Yes.
Wilson?
No.
Cannon?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. The vote was five to two.
Can I ask, Brian?
To, to adopt.
Since they have a building permit, can he not work on it under that building permit?
Technically, no. Two people can work on the property, either a licensed contractor or the individual listed who actually obtained the building permit, which would have to be the owner. He's not listed on the title opinion as being at owner.
But is his mother listed?
His mother is listed.
Okay, and his mother's in assistant living? So he doesn't have any rights because he's the son?
If you don't have power, but turn me.
I'm not saying he doesn't have any rights.
Her medical bills come.
Sir, sir, you cannot talk. In fact, if you outburst again, I'm going to ask Sergeant at Arms to remove you.
Sir, what I'm going to ask you to do is get you an attorney, because you have a league of rights, go that route, okay? Don't say nothing else, because I don't want them to throw you out.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
We did complete the five to two.
Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 121 Tucker Hall Circle in District 7, Casanova Creek Funding LLC, the Third LLC, and Mary Hickman being the last known owners. I did, I did, I'm sorry, 28, this is a nuisance on 2800 Railroad Avenue in District 6, Nicole Jackson Clark being the last known owners. Is there anyone speaking opposition? Okay, what is the pleasure of the council, really District 6? Okay, opposition, in favor, I mean.
Madam President, we filed this case in January of this year. There have been no improvements or no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Okay, District 6, what is the pleasure of the council?
I'll move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 121 Tucker Hall Circle in District 7, Cavanovia Creek Funding, the Third LLC, and Mary Hickman being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone speaking opposition?
Madam President, this case involves vehicles, abandoned vehicles. We need a resolution to go on the property and remove those. We're asking for that today, thank you.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
This is a sad situation, but I move to abate.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing acceptance of Department of Homeland Security reimbursement grant. And this is for the reimbursement grant issued through the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency benefiting the Gaston Edrawal EMA, Gaston Police Department, Glencoe Fire Department, and Ballplay Bend Fire Department. And the amount is $150,961.04. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Hold on.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you?
I just, real quick, Madam President, I just, because we have a captive audience here today, I just want to explain what this is. So these are just reimbursements that the Edrawal County Emergency Management Agency and some local fire departments have applied for with the Department of Homeland Security. It has to do with COVID-19. And so we oftentimes, the City of Gaston will act as the agent, the financial agent, to receive grants for neighboring communities and then disperse them out. So what you're seeing is a resolution for us to accept those funds on behalf of those entities. And then there'll be a following ordinance that amends our budget to reflect that we received this money and we paid it out to those other entities. So, thanks, Madam President.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is a first reading. This is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2021 budget. This reflects the receipt of the Department of Homeland Security reimbursement grant, and the amount is $150,961.04. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading and the council will vote on it next week. Is there any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one item that I'd like to ask the council to consider today. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with CDG Engineers and Associates to provide construction materials, testing services, geotechnical design for Phase 1 of the Gaston Sports Park. Again, I'd like to ask for consideration today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Somebody's second.
We did, Councilman Back.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, I have one, please, I'd like to ask for an initial consent. It's an agreement authorizing with Thomas M. McRath to provide architectural engineering services required to construct a new fire station on South Levin Street in Bank Park in the amount of $85,000.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll move to adopt, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Does that complete our new business? Do we have any department reports? Okay, at this time, we have several citizen requests. We have Kristi Knowles and we have David Chadwick. And then we have, I'm sorry, then we have Justin Overton, this is the rendering plant, rendering plant, Robert Avery, employment in the City of Gaston, and Mayor Joe Taylor, Rainbow City Rendering Plant. Okay?
Thank you, members of the council, for the opportunity to address you today. As you know, the rendering plant on Still Station Road is the topic I wish to talk to you today. I'd speak on behalf of my client, Choice Fabricators and David Chadwick, and the thousands of people who object to this plant coming. Their voices need to be heard. That's the most eloquent thing I can say today, is what, is to, is to just repeat what they are saying. There's nothing more I can say that is more eloquent than what they have to say. And I urge you to listen to what the people in Gaston, surrounding areas, are all saying about this plant and the harmful effect that it will have on our community as a whole. I know you've received thousands of emails, phone calls, and contacts from people, citizens of Gaston, your neighbors, your friends, your churchgoers, just people expressing their constitutional rights to object to this plant. They're asking for your help. Because whether or not you brought it here, regardless of how it got here, it's at your door. You can stop this. And they're asking for your help in order to do exactly that. These are citizens of Gaston and of the county asking for your help. No matter what, ADM or the FAA, I'm hearing, well, let's see if, they'll stop it. Let's see if ADM will turn it, turn down that permit, or the FAA will. Maybe Montgomery will come in and save us. We should be the masters of our own destiny. This is a local issue, this is a local concern. We need to handle it locally and listen to our people. And that's what they're doing, asking you to vote no immediately and unanimously, to reject and refuse any abatements, any incentives, anything that would bring this plant here to our area, our county as a whole. If, there's been some conversations about research, and I hope everybody has done all of that. My hope is that whether than waiting for someone to save us, we will, you will immediately vote to reject this. We've, it's time for us to build something together, whether than to divide each other more by the issue that we have, have here. It's important that people feel like their voices are heard. Transparency has been a very big concern on how this got here and who knew what and who knew what when. The way it's always been done, regardless of what you may hear, that this is how it's supposed to be and this is how it's been done, and that they should be able to come here and get almost to construction months away, but that's okay. Nobody knows and you didn't know and that's just how it's always been done is not good enough. You heard from someone before in the pre-council meeting that personal privilege and that, and the history of us having a handful of people who do this type of thing and later come to you and say, here's a deal for you to approve, is okay. It's not okay anymore. We're not that county, where a handful of people get to decide what the vision is. As you know, we asked for an opportunity to make a 20-minute presentation outlining all of the concerns that we had about this project, the same Pilgrim's, the same opportunity that Pilgrim's Pride had. We were declined that chance and only given five minutes of four different people to speak on this. So I'm unable to go in full detail of the environmental, the health concerns, the industrial, commercial, and retail recruitment concerns and all of the concerns. I invite you to go onto the Opposition Facebook page. These are some very intelligent people who have researched this issue in depth. Despite what was said at last week's meeting, the comments that people express on these social media pages are not fake news, they are not disregardable. They are people expressing their concerns and they are valid. The fact that it's on social media and that they're expressing their concerns there is not a point to disregard what their concerns are. And the idea that they should be disregarded because that's the medium in which this is being expressed in shows part of the problem that's around here, that the listening to the community, which is what social media does, is not happening. What you've heard, if you've seen any of the opposition?
That's five minutes, Ms. Knowles.
I'll, I'll skip since I have so little time. What you haven't heard with regards to this plant, last week you saw this wonderful photograph as it relates to what they were gonna build in orange down here. This, what you didn't, they didn't show you from their plant was the wastewater treatment plant and the lagoons that are eight acres big, the stormwater pond, the 25 bay, 25 bay truck parking. Where's the truck parking there?
You're gonna use up Mr. Chadwick's time.
The truck parking of 25 bays, what's gonna be stored in there?
She's using up your time.
This is what's wrong with how things are run around here. It's a shame. The opportunity for the people to be heard needs to be had. And I encourage you to do that in more depth about this. And I encourage you to vote in opposition unanimously and immediately against anything to do with this plant. I will turn my time over to Mr. Chadwick.
All right.
Madam Council President and Councilman, I appreciate your time today. I'm gonna tell you real quickly, because I obviously got a short period of time. CFI and Choice Fabricators has been a proud member of this community for over 40 years in Etala and now in Rainbow City. I'm gonna give you some statistics. Our current employment rate is 278 positions, of which 63% live and vote in the City of Gaston. 18% is from Etala and 9% is from Rainbow City. Another thing we talked about was jobs, which I find is kind of discerning that we don't know the number of those jobs. In our one-mile radius from my plant, there are currently 186 jobs open that I confirmed myself personally in the last 24 hours. There are over 1,500 people working in that same radius. If you do the math, that's 945 using the same percentages that I have, which are probably pretty close, people that live and vote in Gaston. Those numbers are pretty staggering. Now, we're gonna share some information that you didn't get last week when you asked direct questions from Pilgrim's Pride about pay scale. And understand, this is a very sensitive issue, I understand. And, you know, that I'm sharing this information about my plant and my company, my associates, I'm proud of them, proud of each and every one of them, and what we've been able to accomplish in our time here in Gaston. Of my 238 hourly associates, they have an average pay scale of $14.10 an hour. That does not include their 401K and/or their Blue Cross Blue Shield insurance. That is direct pay. Of my 42 salary associates, they're, once again, no burden added, they're over $60,000 a year per individual. So once you average that together and put the benefits on, my plan average is $26.81 an hour, sir. So what I'd like to also point out, when I contacted Mr. David Hooks on the 19th of November, the Thursday prior to the first Airport Authority meeting, I introduced myself, I've not spoken with him since he's been on the job, which was somewhat surprising. You would think you'd reach out to your fifth-largest employer from industrial base in this town. But either way, I let him know my opposition to this very adamantly. And he listened very unattainably and thank you, and that was the end of the conversation. And then the part that frustrates me the most, I'm trying to make this thing an improvement for everyone at Edrawal County. This is not an Alabama city, it's not a Rainbow City, it's not Etala Southside, it's Edrawal County issue. Because I truly care about everybody in this community. I don't think you'll find one person that can speak up and say that I don't care about everybody in this community. Okay, with that said, I was labeled an oligarch, okay? It's chosen few, I think we've also mentioned today. I didn't fly here today or yesterday on my corporate jet, I drove from my plant. Then it was brought up also, one of our other concerns, was we wouldn't be able to compete with labor and the wages at this new plant we'd be bringing. I think we've completely expelled that today, hopefully, for everyone in the city council to understand. Now, I want to touch on this state-of-the-art facility. I have no doubt that the building itself will be built with new state-of-the-art equipment. Most companies that build a building will do that. They're not gonna build a plant with old state, old equipment, no doubt of that. But that's not my question. My question is, as Ms. Christie tried to point out earlier, is what are we doing with the 25 truck slots that are going to have the renderings of these byproducts of all these animal intestines, leakage of water, waste, blood, whatever you want to call it, parked at any given time? There, once again, and it's 100 trucks a day, not 2.4, is what their original documentation showed. That is in excess of the 25 trailers parked in that lot at any given time of over a million pounds of rotting flesh and product. Million pounds. My second point is the fact that their own information admits there's about a 1.5% capture rate of the product leaving the facility from smokestacks, not burning, you know, just the residuals. Does anyone have an idea of what that 1.5% represents of the 1.2 billion pounds of product they're gonna run through their plant? That's 18 million pounds of product being emitted in our air, in our city, and in our county. Our children deserve better than this, we deserve better than this. We can build better jobs, we have better jobs right now than these 60 jobs or 90 jobs are gonna bring. Hopefully, I've made it very clear of where we stand. But also, I'll just ask one other question. If this plant and this project is such a good thing, can I please see a show of hands of who would move their family, children, and grandchildren out beside this rendering plant? I didn't think I'd see anything, but I do appreciate your time very much, and I hope I've cleared up some issues.
Good morning, y'all. My name is Justin Overton and I'm the Executive Director of Coussa Riverkeeper. We are a river conservation nonprofit organization with over 1,200 dues-paying members. Remember, y'all are here and hollering outside are some of our members. Our mission is to protect, restore, and promote the Coussa River and its tributaries here in Alabama. And I'm here today to voice concerns about this proposed animal rendering facility here in Edrawal County. A river has a head and a mouth, but it doesn't have a voice that speaks for itself. And that's why Coussa Riverkeeper is here today, to speak for Dry Creek Canoe.
why Coussa Riverkeeper is here today, to speak for Dry Creek, Canoe Creek, Neely Henry Lake, and the folks in Gadsden and Etowah County who use the river for recreation, to put dinner on the table, and for all the tourism-related businesses in the area. Coussa Riverkeeper is against development that harms our river, quality of life, and could degrade public health. From an environmental perspective, Neely Henry Lake is already recognized as impaired by the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, ADEM, on its 303D list for nutrient pollution. Guess where all those excess nutrients came from? Chicken processing plants. In the latest EPA toxic release inventory, a local chicken processing facility has discharged 1.4 million pounds of nitrates into the Coussa River. Coussa Riverkeeper doesn't have faith that the negative impact of this facility could be mitigated with strong permits. On the contrary, we anticipate weak permits that are not protective of water quality and air standards, as well as poor enforcement of said permits by ADEM. Rendering facilities and slaughterhouse waste contaminates our waterways with pathogens like E. coli and oxygen-depleting nutrients. Excess bacteria is already an issue in the Canoe Creek watershed. This summer, our organization detected elevated bacteria levels every single week we tested on Canoe Creek that exceeded the EPA water quality standards for whole-body contact, which is the government's way of saying swimming, basically. Rendering facilities dispose of wastewater in three ways, typically after some sort of pretreatment on-site. So one of the ways is they pipe it directly into waterways, and in this case, it would be Dry Creek, spray it on land and call it fertilizer or bio solids, or send it to a local wastewater treatment plant. The proposed rendering facility includes a 4,800-square-foot wastewater treatment plant with the possibility of surface lagoons that will all discharge into Dry Creek, which will make its way into Canoe Creek, which will eventually end up in the Coussa River at Neely Henry Lake. Instead of cleaning its coop, Pilgrims Pride notoriously has violated environmental laws at their facilities across the nation. Since 2000, the company has had 44 violations with total penalties of over $5 million just for environmental violations alone. So it's important to note that the area of impact in this facility is really bigger than five miles. You've seen probably some big graphics that show that five-mile radius, but because of the widespread biosolid application, it's gonna affect communities far and wide. So in 2019, River Valley Ingredients Rendering Plant in Hansville spread over 190,000 wet tons of sludge from their facility, and they called it fertilizer. Some of that sludge was applied here in Etowah County and in some of the surrounding counties. So odor problems in this community could result in direct impacts like interruption of services, nuisance, loss of quality of life, but it could also result in health impacts, including sleep disturbances, loss of appetite, headaches, cough, vomiting, and concentration issues. Since 2019, 101 citizen complaints have been filed against River Valley Ingredients regarding odor from that single animal rendering plant in Hansville. Animal rendering facilities can be a major source of nitrogen dioxide, which can also irritate airways in the human respiratory system, it can aggravate asthma, and in some instances, it can, with long-term exposure, can actually cause an individual to develop asthma. So when you look at the violation track record of JBS, the parent company of Pilgrims Pride, they have violated clean air standards at four of their facilities across the United States. ADEM rubber stamps water and air permits. Their permits are often weak, and when polluting industries self-report violations, the department rarely enforces the limits on the permit that they set. So ADEM enforcement actions are not only discretionary, but they cannot garner a fine greater than a quarter of a million dollars, which is a slap-on-a-risk fine for a business like Pilgrims Pride. Pilgrims Pride has a horrendous environmental track record at their facilities across the nation. So I ask the council this: Why would their environmental noncompliance be any different here? Greater Gadsden Tourism credits fishing tournaments with helping the local economy. A 2019 study by Jacksonville State University determined the total impact of the Coussa and Neely Henry to be $570 million, and it was also reported that the tournament bass fishing in 2017 created $10.4 million of new revenue. Neely Henry hosted a Bassmaster Open this past October with 172 boats and 300 anglers. The Gadsden Times reported that that single tournament was responsible for over $1 million of economic impact. Neely Henry will host its first Bassmaster Elite Tournament in May 2021. I'm almost done. To continue to attract large national-level tournaments such as these, we must prioritize the health of the lake and its fishery. It's not out of the realm of possibility that a fish kill could occur as a result of this proposed rendering operation. Do y'all remember the Mulberry Fork fish kill last year? Protecting Neely Henry Lake is an economic engine and environmental treasure, and public drinking water supply should be of most importance to the council. If Pilgrims Pride Rendering operates in this county, they're not just jeopardizing public health or the river and ensuring pollution for years to come, they're jeopardizing an entire local economy that thrives around the lake. I'm here today because I don't wanna be responsible for telling people they shouldn't get into the river or to stay inside due to poor air quality, because we put economic development over the welfare of the community. Invest in your lake, not in its demise. Thank you.
Madam President, before my time starts, I'd like to say something to a city clerk.
Uh-uh. No.
To our city clerk.
No.
Hey, guys.
You all wanna leave too?
You might as well put your foot in your mouth.
Everybody who's been up here has gone over there five minutes.
They sure have, and I haven't said one thing except for the two.
All I'm saying is, I want to acknowledge Ivan Essen, who lost her husband, she's back, and I know it's gotta be rough on you, but we really appreciate you, we love you. And like I told you earlier, if there's anything that we can do, please, ma'am, call us. Now, my time can start, because it won't take me five minutes. Everybody's got up here and spouted out all these great statistics. My 24 years on this council have taught me one thing about incoming industries and businesses. We can always do and alter contracts, and everybody's been talking about the environment and the water pollution, the air pollution. If we hadn't had the president administration that we have, that some of these folks out there hollered and voted for, the air and water quality would be a lot better. And I'm hoping that in the future, with this new administration coming in, that's gonna be changed. But in the meantime, I have a question for our city attorney. In structuring these contracts, and I don't know if it's possible, but I would like for you to look into it, it's interesting what you can hear outside. I understand that they're gonna bring in some illegals and all these other folk and all this other stuff, all this stuff is floating out there. I know as a city, we can put in their contracts or in their agreement that we make sure they hire local people. We can do that. I don't know to what extent, but I know we can do that. And I'm asking this council, if you do approve the project, that that be included in there. Second thing that I want this council and the city attorney to look up, all these people talking, and this young lady gave a nice presentation about all the pollution and stuff in the air and in the waters, let's see who's doing that now. If you will do a complete study, or maybe she'll give you her information as to which companies. All we gotta do is check with ADEM, I'm assuming that ADEM would have that information as to who's been polluting the water, who's been polluting the air. So you can't put everything on this company if y'all decide to bring it in. I'm asking you to do that research also. The last thing I wanna say is that we lost approximately $2 to $3 million in revenue from the shutdown of Goodyear. We need jobs in this community. Glad to hear that there was a few jobs available at this company. I only heard it today in here. I don't hear it outside, and I don't see any recruiting going on in my community to hire folk for those jobs. I'm not sure what the specialty is in those jobs, but if that person would get with me, I guarantee you, I could send some folks there who would qualify for those jobs. So see, we can do all the things we wanna do, and we can spot out all these statistics, but the bottom line is, we need jobs in our community. And none of these folk came to this council while I was here, when we bought the chicken plant in, steel plants smell, Goodyear smell, everything we bring in smells. It's just so happened that it's in their yard and not mine's this time. When it was in mine's, they never showed up. And I understand that. You got a lot of folks that are here now denies that the COVID is real. I'm telling you, it's real because I've had it, and they ain't gonna believe it until they get it. And we just got people like that. Please, ma'am, and please, sir, consider this community, that we need those jobs, we need that employment in our city, and all this other stuff will blow over eventually. I feel sorry for some of them. I understand their frustration because it's gonna be in their yard. But again, like I say, they never showed up when it was in my yard. And all of a sudden now, it's an issue. And I would hope, Mr. Attorney, that when you draw up that agreement, that we make sure all the folk who are working live inside the city limits, and hopefully, if you can do this, if people live in Commission District 4, be excluded from those jobs. Thank you.
My name's Joe Taylor, I'm the mayor of Rainbow City. I live at 200 Merchant, and my other address, which is full-time now, is 3,700 Rainbow Drive, that's City Hall in Rainbow City. I first want to show complete and utter respect from my city to yours in allowing me to come and do this. I know this is very touchy ground, I know that it's very sensitive that another mayor would step into another mayor's city and begin to speak on something that has such an incredible impact as this. I spent 25 years as a firefighter for the city of Gadsden, and there were only two rules on my fire truck. Number one was that we protected everyone's dignity. It didn't matter what their quarter in life was, it didn't matter what color they were, what creed, what nationality, I didn't care what religion they had. We respected people on my fire truck and showed them absolute and complete protection of their dignity. The second rule was that we brought calm to chaos, and I think that's probably what I'm here to talk about now. The truth is, when I came north on 411, you know, I thought about the fact that we've tried to separate our communities, we've tried to talk about the different things that keep us from each other, and the truth is, when I came from Rainbow City to Gadsden, there's no difference. There really is no difference. I came through our area that has our Section 8 housing, and I came into the most affluent section of Gadsden, and then I passed through into the downtown area, and every bit of that is beautiful to me because I served this city and this city matters to me. It's my home, it's where I was educated, I'm a 59-year-old citizen of Etowah County, and I'm so proud of that. But the one thing that's come up and seems to be continually debated is the term "state of the art." I'm so sick of hearing "state of the art," I can't stand it. And the reason I say that is because it's funny that there's a correlation between the word "rendering" and the word "rendering" in the situation of this poultry plant. A rendering is just a rough drawing, it's just a sketch, if you will. And in our situation now, we're looking at a sketch, we're looking at a plant that's being called "state of the art," and yet there's not one. We're looking at a situation where they're continuing to just tell us, and they're telling all of us, that this thing's gonna work, and yet it's just an engineering drawing. It's on an angled board where somebody's sitting in front of a computer and a CAD, and they're drawing this plant up, and yet we know that there's no way that with absolute certainty that we can say that this plant will work. We can't do that. Therefore, it's not state of the art, it's an experiment. And we know that throughout time, that individually and collectively, we've been experimented on for hundreds and hundreds of years. Now, while that's not fair, I can promise you this: It doesn't allow for us to go forward and say that it's continuing to go on. And I believe that this council and this mayor will stand for its people the same as I will, and will lock arms and say that, yes, while this thing does have an economic impact, it does have jobs, I promise you that Rainbow City will lock arms with you, and we'll find jobs for the people that need them, and we'll find the economic growth that we need to find. But I just can't hardly believe that this is the way to go. It's an experiment, it's a test, and what if it fails? God forbid that it would fail. When I was in the Army, I was a paratrooper for 17 years, I had hundreds of jumps, and that really doesn't matter, except for the people that were the predecessors of the airborne. They walked out before a group of men, and they said, "We wanna take, basically, some bed sheets, we're gonna suspend those with pieces of cord, and we're gonna tie them to harness, and we're gonna kick your tail out of an airplane, and you're gonna be a test platoon." Now, I know that Councilman Worthy understands this because he was in the military for quite a long time, and we know how they would do, they would test on us. Not that it's right or wrong, but it's a different world. But when they would say that you're gonna fall, and you're gonna float down, and you're gonna gently touch the ground, and everything's gonna go well, I promise you, it didn't go well. They had to go through more and more iterations, and during that time, there was one common thing, that there was only one man hanging under that parachute, and he was willing to do that. With this, we know that there are 4,400 students within a radius, and if we just expand that radius a little bit, I think we'd go to about 7,000 students. Those students don't deserve it, the only time in their life that they're able to go outside and breathe fresh air and understand that this is their time, and I'll finish, and I'll promise you that I'll do that with total respect. It was their time to go out and breathe fresh air. And Robert Avirian, he's a friend of mine, he spoke of COVID, and it is real, and I promise you one thing, it's the only escape they have. I'm begging you, I'm pleading with you, don't do this. And I can tell you, my council and my office will come up and lock arms with you, and we'll find a way out of this economic struggle. And I appreciate you, I respect this office, I respect every office that you have represented here, and I've been in each one of your districts, I served your people, and I showed them absolute and complete dignity for 25 years. Thank you so much.
At this time, we'll have our attorney, Mr. Lee Roberts, to come.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not here today to speak either for or against this project. I'm gonna address one issue I think the public needs to understand: the process. So I wanna outline the process so everybody understands where we are. But first of all, I think we need to, I wanna take the heat for this, because we've had a couple of councilmen who have gotten on Facebook Live and have participated in a Facebook Live event. And since their appearance, it seems that there has been an increase in personal threats against this council and the mayor, as well as other threats of bribery and taking money, that sort of thing. We have another councilman who's scheduled for a Facebook Live, and since he was scheduled, there's been an uptick in personal threats against him, as well as vandalism. But more importantly, to me, as legal counsel for the city, and I'm gonna take full responsibility for this, is the city and the IDA, and I'm about to explain, is under a nondisclosure agreement. And these council people, at this point in time, may or may not have overheard discussions or might inadvertently say something that violates these nondisclosure agreements. So I have advised the council, and this is on me, to refrain from public comment on this at the present time, that the time will come. Now, I'd like to explain briefly the process of how this is working at this point, so everybody understands, because actually, I think we're getting the cart before the horse. Having been with the city for seven years now, I've learned about the recruitment of industry, and as well as, and we've had many expansions of industry as well. I've learned that for a myriad of different reasons, industry seeks to keep details involving its potential new site locations confidential. And I've learned that these things can range from competitive reasons, to fluctuation of stock prices, compliance with federal laws such as the Homeland Security Act, or fluctuation of land prices of where they wanna locate. And knowing this, our state legislature passed a law, it's called Section 41-2- It's called Section 41-29-3. And it allows cities to enter into non-disclosure agreements with prospective industry. The law helps cities such as in Alabama get on equal footing with cities of other states in competing for industry. And I want to make clear that in this case, the city did not recruit the project. Rather, the state presented the project to us. And when the project was presented, the mayor, on behalf of the city, and David Hooks, who on behalf of the Industrial Development Authority, and I'll call them the IDA, signed non-disclosure agreements pursuant to state law and had to sign those before any details of this project would be discussed with us. And so after that, since the initial details of what this plant was considering, since that time, the company has gone about its process to determine the viability of the proposed site. And so a few aspects of the process, of which I'm aware of, are that, you know, they're looking at site readiness. They're looking at whether, you know, they're looking at getting the water in sewer and how it's going to be paid for. They're trying to find a contractor. They're obtaining various federal, as Christie mentioned, permits from both the feds and the state. And that's where we are. They're in that process. And once those preliminary matters are checked out and say the company still wants to locate here, then at that point, David Hooks will, from the IDA, will discuss the details, the full details of the project with the mayor. And at that point, the mayor will sign a non-disclosure agreement similar to the one Christie somehow got. And that non-disclosure agreement is going to be concerning potential economic incentives and impacts with the state and us. And David will go back and check out with the state to make sure, with the various departments, to make sure those numbers are correct. In the meantime, that is when the council becomes involved. Because at that time, the full details of this project, not preliminary sketches, not preliminary drawings, but the full details of this project will be discussed with this council. And they will have the information. At that point, there will be a public hearing. There's no timetable for this council to decide on the abatements and potential land transfers. They will have a full public hearing. I know Christie was upset about her five minutes, but there was a legitimate reason for that. But I'm here to tell her and tell everybody, she and David will have the floor. And they can present facts and evidence to this council, and they will consider. And likewise, we'll hear from the silent partner in the proposed company. And they will come and they'll present their facts and evidence. And this council will have the opportunity to verify those facts and evidence, to verify, is what Christie's saying true or not true? Is she comparing apples to oranges? Is this Pilgrim's Pride coming in here? Are they shooting straight with us? What they told us, can we verify that? And when that evidence and when that facts are presented to this council, then that's when they will decide. So right now, you know, I just want to discuss the process so everybody understands where we are and what's going to be happening down the road so we're all on the same page. So that's all I have to say.
Madam President, am I the only one to have a problem with this yelling out here? We cannot allow that when we have people up here talking. Now, they were respectful when y'all were talking. They should be respectful when our attorney is talking.
Well, they have a right, you know, they have a right to, they have a right for peaceful protest if that's what they're doing. What you have to learn, what you have to learn to do like I do, tune it out. Tune it out. I learned that over 38 years. Some things you just tune out. I don't even know they're out there until you mention it.
Thank you, Lee.
Councilman Wilson, do you want to start us off?
No, but I will. I obviously am not lost on the overall sentiment of this community. I do want to say that I don't think it's fair that we have members of our state legislature forming PACs to run robo-calls accusing the Gadsden City Council of secretly trying to sneak this by the community. That never happened. What's happened here is, and I'm honestly really excited about it. What's happened here is an entire community has come alive and realized that they have to play a part in their community. They can't just let it go and not care about what's going on because stuff like this that they don't like happens. I'll give you a prime example. Everybody says, "Well, why weren't we informed as a community?" We have a process. If you want to get involved in local government, we have an airport authority board. We have an industrial development board. We have a commercial development board. We have a zoning review board. And people don't participate. They just flat don't. We've had issues that were equally as important to this community where nobody shows up. Nobody shows up. I've never seen anything like this for any other issue that's come before this body since I've been a city councilman. And this is the other thing y'all have to understand. I did it. I'm giving you guys what may seem as a lecture right now because I did it. I am not a politician. I'm not a career politician. I am a small business owner in this community that started a business, and I grew 27 jobs. And for all y'all, I can't help but tell you this. When y'all sit out there and go, "It's only 90 jobs," y'all have no idea how hard it is to create a job, okay, from nothing. And I've worked hard. And it was only after 11 years of me volunteering as the chairman of the Etowah County Chamber of Commerce, the president of Gadsden Commercial Development Authority, serving on countless charitable boards in this community, over a decade of service where I got zero compensation for it. It was all volunteer work. And that culminated in a bunch of people approaching me about two and a half years ago and saying, "Jason, we think you could do a good job on the city council because you obviously care about this community." That's why I ended up in this seat. I'm not here to get rich. I'm not getting any kickbacks or bribes, all this stuff. You guys have so hard of a time separating local politics from national politics. We are your neighbors. We are people that you've grown up with, that you know. You know, the reason that I have no intentions to run for this seat ever again is because people I know, people that I was, I grew up with every day of my life have made accusations about me over the last three weeks that I'm somehow part of some big, secret group
Amen, Jason.
that's getting paid a bunch of money to do this stuff.
They clap and I, amen.
What's happened is, you guys have all been brought into a process that is very complex. Municipal government is very complex. Y'all talk about what we're doing about IDA. We have a qualified Industrial Development Authority leader who is accredited, and most cities in Alabama would have been happy to have him. Whether you agree with the way he's handled this or not is a separate story. He is a credentialed professional in economic development and industrial development. He has led the State Economic Development Agency for the state of Alabama. So when we sit up here as city councilmen, as overseers of the fiscal budget here, it is not my job to go out and recruit businesses. It's my job to oversee that process when it comes time for me to. But we put our faith in industrial development leaders. When you talk about what's the legal process for confidentiality, I'm not an attorney. I put my faith in the city attorney, who is a legal professional, to tell me what is right and wrong within this body. If it is discovered that somehow those principles have not been followed, then that is not, in my opinion, a lack of oversight on my part. I'm not here to be the legal overseer of the city. I'm here to evaluate projects that come before me in an objective way and try to do what's best for this community. And the thing that I reject the most about this is this county commission had five months to review this project in confidentiality, with nobody knowing about it. They got a chance to kick the tires. They got a chance to go get on an airplane and fly to Iowa and look at one of these plants. And then they got to come back and talk about it. Now, obviously, there's two different versions of the story with the county commission now. And I don't, it doesn't surprise me that this has happened this way. The original story was that they couldn't afford the $20 million to locate it at the mega site. Now, the story is, they all collectively kind of talked about it and decided that it wasn't good for the community, and so they passed on it. I don't really care which version of those stories is true. What I do care about is making the point that they were allowed to go through their process. They were allowed to go through their process and then make a decision. This city council has not been given that opportunity. We have not, we found out about this when everybody else did. And we've been lambasted and kicked around and had the most awful things said about us when we knew nothing about this. So the only thing I'm asking from anybody concerned with this, like I said the other night, I am not a moron. I have all the same concerns that you do. I have family in every part of this county. I went to John Jones. I went to Rainbow Middle School. I used to go fishing at my grandparents' house right down the road from this place. I know this community. And I will, I will review this process and come to a logical decision. I can tell you that. But what you're not going to do is come in here and intimidate me and make up bold, crazy accusations that just come out of thin air and yell and scream to try to get me to go the way you want me to go. I'm going to go through this process, and I'm going to vote on this project the way I would any other project, any other time. I hear you. It is obvious to me that this community does not want this project. I am, again, talking about the Coussa River Keepers. Ask Ms. Overton and the Coussa River Keeper, who was serving on their Board of Directors when we started the Coussa River Swim Guide. Ask her who helped replace the testing equipment just months ago so that we could continue to offer that swim guide. I've been doing it from day one. I'm not just up here talking about it. So I am glad that everybody's at the table. This is a good thing. I'm glad you're all here. I'm glad you're all finally paying attention to what's going on in this community. And there is no doubt in my mind that we will come out of this as a better community. But we have to respect each other, and you have to give us the opportunity to go through this process. I'm not going to be bullied into voting one way or another just because more people are screaming at me.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Kent, Councilman Beck.
Hope nobody minds, I'm going to take my mask off. I don't have COVID that I know of. Point of personal privilege, I was out the last two Tuesdays. I was exposed to COVID. I went to a friend's house. I kept my mask on the entire time I was there. But he called me the next day. He had COVID. So I have self-quarantined in my bedroom at my house. And I was free to roam about this past Saturday. So for those of you that think I was hiding from a tough issue, I was not. I was obeying the CDC and the Alabama State Health Department and Dr. Jamie Robinson's orders to stay at home. Man, everything Jason said, almost everything, I'm in total agreement with. I'm excited to see the activity. I'm excited to see the interest. You know, quite frankly, I'm not excited at some of the things that I'm seeing. But that's okay. I mean, this is a free country. Everybody can do what they want to do. Before I get on that, though, before I forget, Ms. Baker, that received the proclamation earlier, thank you, Ms. Baker. She's left, but we need more Ms. Bakers. She wants to put a roof over people's heads. We've got homeless people in Gadsden. It's becoming a real problem. The only two shelters in the four county area are the Salvation Army, of which I'm on that board, and the Love Center. And it's not enough beds. I'd love to see this energy go to help solve homeless. I've served on the Homeless Coalition, and I'd be glad to have every one of you come and join us to help fight homelessness because it's a heart issue, and we could use your heart. You obviously have great hearts. The other side of that, we saw the gentleman here earlier, that 20 Mitchell Street. I do not enjoy being on the city council when I have to vote to enforce the ordinances that are on our books to quote-unquote condemn that man's house. I get no joy in that. And I'm sitting here looking at him the whole time. My heart's breaking. But here we are, everybody. We're a nation of laws, and we're a city of laws. When we start picking and choosing which ones we're going to obey and which processes we're going to obey, and we just kind of, every Tuesday, come up here and start picking and choosing, then we turn into Yugoslavia or some third-world country where we're not going to be proud of ourselves. So we have processes in place that we have to obey. I was elected to do that. I swore, I put my hand on a Bible. Judge Bill Ray gave me my oath, and I swore to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state of Alabama, which also covers the city of Gadsden. So those are the kind of things that you have to take. Those things you saw us do today, all these public hearings, ordering abatements, that's what a city councilman does. My day is filled with, "Mr. Back, my garbage didn't get picked up. When's the debris truck going to come?" I've been doing this for two years. I turned 62 the day after Thanksgiving. I've been doing this for two years. Mike Hilton, I think, hates to see me coming because I call him every day. And my hat's off to Mike Hilton and our public works. They do a phenomenal job. But I'm always asking for, that's what a city councilman does. We're the first line of defense for our city government and for the citizens. We're the ones the citizens come to. We're in a situation now that's just almost become untenable. I mean, it's, Lee Roberts said it very well. There's a process in place. I'm being yelled at and forced to make a decision today and to do things now. I'm not ready to make that decision. I was elected to do the work of the people, and I don't think it's fair to only hear the prosecution and not hear the defense attorney. I think it's fair to hear the defense attorney. So I think it's prudent to do that. Hopefully, when the temperature drops, you would agree with me. You can't hear one side of an equation and then make your decision. I have my personal thoughts, and I've returned hundreds of emails. No, I haven't. I've received hundreds. I've returned dozens of emails. And those of you that have received those, thank you for sending them. You're all saying the same thing, and I'm responding. And let me get the information before I'm going to make a decision. To me, that's just common sense. To me, that's just common sense. Want to talk about the threats? You're looking at a guy that my son and his wife and three-year-old daughter live next door to me. And I may get choked up, but I'm going to finish this. If you're going to come shoot me, I live at 200 Wild Haven Circle in Gadsden. My son and my three-year-old granddaughter and my daughter-in-law, they live right next door, but it's 116. Please don't make a mistake. Please don't go to 116 to shoot me, okay? I have a blue Ford, a 2004 blue Ford F-150 pickup truck. It's always in the driveway. That's my house. If you want to shoot me, come to 200 Wild Haven Circle and do it. But don't go to 116. That's my son. He has nothing to do with this. That's what I'm dealing with. That's the kind of stuff that I'm dealing with. Anybody want to swap? Want to see a show of hands? Who wants to swap?
I'm right by your side.
I mean, you know, that's the kind of stuff. And then, and then we get put on, this is my first time to now. I know I'll be on the Facebook TV, not the TV show, Christie, but the other one, though, whoever's putting on that stuff. I guess Senator Jones, that this will be a clip, and it'll be, you know, and so, you know, thanks a lot. That'll be fun. So, you know, this is, this has just gone too far. This has gone far enough. We hear you. We know what you're saying. There's nothing more you can say that's going to change anybody's mind. I'm going to listen to the evidence, and then I'm going to vote my, what I think's the best thing to do. And I'm listening to my constituents. District Four is my constituency. Rainbow Drive, Country Club, Clubview, Edenwood, and parts of East Gadsden over here by the Junior College. I'm listening to my constituents. And I will, and I'm, when the time comes, then I will make my vote. And I will justify every vote that I'm going to make. And I'll tell you why I made what I made. But I just want you to know that this is enough. This is enough. This is enough. We get it. I get it. Boy, this will be a great one to end on. For about six months, First Baptist Church, where I serve as a deacon, in fact, Joe Taylor and I were ordained as deacons the same night, some, what, Joe, 20? and I were ordained as deacons the same night, some, what, Joe, 25 years ago, 20 years ago? Joe and I still didn't have hair that night, but it was, but, but we were there together along with Billy Dillard and Charles Elrod, God rest his soul, and, and Dr. Tommy Dowling, remember it like it was yesterday, one of the highlights of my life. We've been feeding every Wednesday at First Baptist Church, this is, tomorrow's our last day to feed, it's gonna start at 12, we've got 350 boxes, one box per car, is all, y'all, we've gotta do one box per car. Please come, please know that we'd love to give you two boxes a car, we can only give one, and so, and that'll be the last meal, the last food that we're able to distribute in this calendar year. And it's been a blessing to be a part of that, it's been a blessing to serve our community, just like Jason, you know, I've served on tons of boards, I've been a mentor, I've, I have poured my life into this community. And at age 60 or whatever, I'd run for city council, and, and, and here I sit, but you've got, in, in all of us, and, but I'll speak for me, somebody that really cares about my community, I care about my neighbors in Rainbow City, in Southside, in unincorporated Etowah County, and I've said in my emails, I would never do anything that would bring anything of harm to Gadsden or Etowah County. Why would I do that? Why would I wanna do that? Why would I live here for the rest of my life with my family and bring something of, of harm? So, that's how I feel, and, and I do appreciate the energy, and I do appreciate your ability to freely, in our great country, to, to do what you're, you're doing, but this, some of this has just gone far enough, this has just gone too, too far. I'm having to tell on, on television, and this is gonna be played over and over, don't come and shoot at the wrong house, shoot at my house. I'm the one that asked for this job, I'm the one that ran. Don't go next door where my son and my little three-year-old granddaughter live and shoot one of them. If you're gonna shoot somebody, shoot me and come to 200 Wild Haven Circle, and don't shoot my wife, she's been a kindergarten teacher in this city for 38 years, countless, countless families she has impacted. Some of you, I think I can't see through your masks, but y'all are the recipients of, of, of some of her love, and, and, and she's a great teacher, like all of our teachers are. If you got a problem, come to me, don't go to my family, don't go to my wife, and don't go to my children. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna stop, because I'm gonna say something that I'm gonna regret. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks to both of you for your comments, I, I do appreciate that, Jason in particular, you're, or Councilman Williams in particular, you're, you're recalling the, the truth of the, the timeline and the flow of events as it relates to this. It's a shame, I mean, I can tell you, you know, I have some strong opinions about why the county commission was given the opportunity to walk this through the normal process, but we weren't. But I, I won't go down that path, because again, I think, I think it's pretty clear. You know, I think we've all been pretty, most of us, if not all of us, have been pretty clear about our respect for this community and their position. Honestly, if this were happening in my backyard, I'd probably take a similar position, I wouldn't be, definitely wouldn't be doing this stuff, but, but I would, would probably be opposed to it, and I would probably have sent out an email or two by now, or made a phone call or two by now. You know, I mean, it's just, that's just the, the, the normal process of how protective people are about their communities. But the more you hear, I mean, we don't, we don't wanna hear about that coming from outside, I don't care, and as he's talking about his grandchildren, or his grandchild, aw, sarcastically, you know, that is so Trump-ish, it, it is so not what America stands for and what America's about. And the more you hear that kind of stuff and those bully tactics, the more it eats away at that respect. You know, I, I had a friend stand up there today and say, someone that I consider a friend, to be a friend, to say, vote on it now and don't vote on A.D.M., you know, don't take the benefit of the process. I, I don't know why that's important, but apparently it is, apparently that, that, that part's important. And again, the more you hear that kind of stuff, the more you, you start to dwindle away at that respect, and, and, and the, and the more you get pushed into really digging in and making a, a decision that's more personal than it is community. And, and what I want you guys to, to understand is, you know, I, I stand right now where I stood from the very beginning, you know, and I, and I thank our city attorney for what he had the courage to do today, and, and he stood up there and he laid out the process. And I know a lot of people, you know, why, why, why screw up a good story with the truth? Nobody really wants to hear the truth, but the truth of the matter is, there is a, a process that we have to follow. The county commission was given the benefit of that. The project, the reality is, I, I think Jason was very diplomatic in saying that there are two versions of the truth, but the reality is, is the only reason that the county didn't get that project is because they couldn't afford it, that's, that's just the reality of it. It wasn't because they said no to it. As a matter of fact, if you, if you listen really closely, and, and you're likely to hear some surprising facts to come forward, and it's not my position to really tell you those facts, but if you listen, if you listen really closely, you'll understand that there were some other things at play there that didn't involve the city of Gadsden. It was a lot more interesting before it got to us, I can, I can assure you. So, please, guys, I, I would just, I would just beg you to please, I, I mean, I was very disappointed when I heard those comments being made as Councilman Beck, uh, Councilman Beck was, was saying what he said. I, I honestly don't think, that, that's not very Alabama, you know, and it's not, not very southern at all, and it's not what I think most of us stand for. I, I know a lot of the people that may be leading the charge, and, you know, I've, I've eaten at one of them's home on multiple occasions, and respect him to the, to the utmost, but, you know, at the end of the day, because, you know, his position is what it is, doesn't mean that, that, that mine won't at some point be in line with it. At this point, we have to be allowed to walk through the process, just as any other elected official has been given that benefit, and then we have to be allowed to, to vote on it in its time. And, and I don't think it does any of us any good to try to get out in front of the process, to step outside of the, of the, of the confidentiality agreements, and, and, and be outside of what's considered, what's considered appropriate as this process goes. Folks, again, we respect your position, please don't eat away at that respect with meanness and with, and with just downright evil, please don't do that, please don't do that. The last thing, the only other thing I'll say is, is we lost a member of our city clerk's office this week. Our prayers go out to the city of, to the family of Melba Anderson. For those of you that, that, that don't know, and I, again, I don't wanna make a, a spectacle of this, but we, we've been, we've been hit hard at city hall in one, one area in particular. And, you know, and I don't wanna feed any rumors as it relates to that, but, but there are families behind all of that, and what I would ask that you do is to continue to pray for those families. Those families need your prayers right now more than they need your commentary. So, please, continue to pray for those families. That's all I have, Madam President.
Mayor, you have anything?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, I probably had about 500 texts to vote no. Let me explain how the mayor council works. The council is over the buildings and all the property, the mayor is over the employees. The only time I would ever be questioned, or asked to vote is if there was a tie on the council vote, and I have a great council that I've worked with, we've been friends for a long time, just about all of them, some of them are taught in school and coached, but, you know, so much misinformation out there, I know I was number one on Facebook for two or three weeks about stuff that's not true. You know, some of them are questioning now my ability to walk, talk, and chew chewing gum, and I get a check up there every year, and I don't have Alzheimer's, I don't have dementia, I don't have any of that stuff, I do have a titanium hip, if I go through the airport, it rings off. And it's really remembering about the last election when the Women's Democratic Society were saying all this stuff and trying to get me out of office, and I'm pretty sure some of them was behind that. And, you know, if you, if you don't know anything, you need to find out the facts, and that's the facts. And this council's good, they're steady, they do stuff, we all take a look at everything, but I don't vote, never have voted. So, anyway, don't text me no more, I don't have time to look at all of them. Thank you.
Councilman, where are they?
Okay, yes, Madam President. First of all, I wanna say to Tanya Baker that got the proclamation, thank you for the job that you're doing. We fed 400 people at the Thanksgiving lunch and dinner, we really thank you, she's been doing it for years, and like I said, I just found out she actually cooked all the food by herself. We just come in and help, I thought the other ladies was helping cooking, but they're not, they were just, we just come in and they help serve, so thank you again, and we're trying to figure out, we're gonna do it again for Christmas, I think it may be Christmas Eve, we may do it the day before, but we working that out right now. And we are, let me make an announcement, we are doing a golf tournament this Friday, a benefit tournament at Twin Bridges for one of the golfers, the golfer's there, he has, I'm not gonna call his name, but he has cancer on his brain, he did, they did the surgery, but he's totally blind. Now, two months ago, we were out there playing golf together, so this week, Friday, we're gonna do a golf tournament, every money, every penny raised is going to him and his family. So, there'll be an 11 o'clock shotgun start at Twin Bridges. And to the people, I understand that you're upset, but like I've been telling everybody to call me, or email me, or text me, well, I was able to, at first, to reply, but it's so many and they're so numerous, I cannot reply to all of them. So, this is what I've been saying, let the process run its course, give us a chance to let the process work, and you may be overreacting, it just, it's a possibility that you're overreacting to people that's opposing this, but just give us a chance to do our due diligence, our job to look at it, just like the other council people said, you know, the county, they were able to do everything in secret for months. And when I found out about it, like I said on that video, and maybe it was a mistake for me to go on there, Lee, but, the live video, but I went on it, because I wanna answer the questions, the heck, I don't know nothing. I found out, like I said, when I had a council person from the, another city call me Thursday before it all broke loose, asked me about it, and I told him I didn't have a clue what he was talking about. But when he, when he said the name, I said, well, that's a chicken plant, why wouldn't it come here? You know? But then I called, made some phone calls to the administration, and, you know, the confidentiality agreements, they couldn't talk about it, but yes, said something was coming. So, we're not trying to hide anything, and I'm sick of people saying that, I'm sick of people saying that we are taking money. I wasn't a crooked cop when I was a cop for 26 years almost here in the city of Gadsden, and I've been dang if I'm gonna be crooked up here. And that's simple, and the threats, you don't scare me. I, I volunteered to go serve my country, volunteered when they called up the 2nd and 1-52, our sister company, and I was in the 1st and 1-52, and they need fillers, and several of us volunteered to go. So, and to the mayor of Rainbow City, you know I respect you so much, we work together, we've been on calls, I've seen, you know, we tease each other, talking about firemen don't do anything, but when you see them running inside a, a house that's fully involved with nothing but what they got on, you, you realize they are something, and they'll be to, we should respect you all, just like law enforcement, we should respect them. But my thing is, we have to work the process. I know you just got in office, so you may not realize the process, but we have a process we go through. With anything that's coming, any industrial development, industry, any commercial development or commercial industry that's coming in, commercial, like retail or anything, it's the same process. The IDA handled it, Lisa Osman on the commercial end, David Hooks on the IDA end. It comes to us right when we're gonna do the tax abatement or whatever we're gonna do. So, that's the way it works. It may need to be changed, because some people say, well, change it, you know? That's, maybe we can talk about that. But listen, threatening us and threatening this man, the, the shooting, that, that's just not gonna get it. We're not a banana republic. I've been to some of those when I was in the military, going on over these third world countries when I was on active duty. So, that's how banana republics act, that's how people act in these dictatorship countries, and that's, and that's what we, we are not a, we don't have a dictator. We, we just don't. So, we shouldn't be acting like that, there's nothing wrong with voicing your opinion, I have no problem with that. When Black Lives Matter was out here protesting, I came out with them, I didn't have a problem as long as you protesting to do it peacefully, but when you threatening us, that, that is, that's just, that doesn't make any sense, because that, all you're gonna do is really make me mad and make me vote for it. Right now, I'm trying to do my due diligence and trying to work the process, and even wanna go to a plant, travel to a plant to see, to give me a reason to vote no, but if you all keep on acting the way you're acting, I'll just vote yes for the heck of it, and forget trying to do the due diligence, because you're threatening us and bullying us is not gonna get it. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sitting here just really trying to think what I wanna say, I've got so much I wanna say. I see all these signs out back and how all these people are passionate, and they're hollering and they're carrying on out there. You know, what would we be like if we could do the same thing for our Lord Jesus Christ? We could get people saved and, and ask people to come to the Lord and ask them where they are, ask them about their hearts? Don't you think we might get a lot of people saved? Don't you think we need to maybe turn from this right now to after Christmas? We all know what the meaning of Christmas is? Hey, let's forget about this right, because this council's not gonna do anything till we get all the facts, it's not gonna be no time soon. If you're gonna bring those signs out there, let's bring something about our Lord and Savior out there, let's put up a sign, hey, do you know him, do you love him? As I heard the other day, somebody told me there was 5,000 people on the Facebook for this. What could 5,000 people do in this city, in this county right here for our Lord Jesus Christ? What could we do? Can anybody answer my question for me? Does anybody want to? I'll tell you what we could do, we could get the people that's non-saved, the people that don't believe in our Lord Jesus Christ, we could get them saved, we could get them a home, they could get theirself a home, eternal home in heaven. I think y'all people need to kind of stand back and take a look at that, see what this season is, and understand where we, where I'm coming from. We can do a lot better than we doing right now at this time of year, guys, and I'm ashamed of a lot of y'all for what y'all, the way y'all handling this right here, it's Christmas time, let's talk about the birth of our Savior, let's talk about what God's done for us, what he's gonna do for us, let's go to our neighbor's house and say, hey, and ask them about their salvation and see if they're saved, our people, our friends that we don't know what's saved, hey, I heard somebody was talking about shooting us, I got the thing Friday from the clerk's office, they're gonna shoot us. Shoot me first, I guarantee you, I know where I'm going, I know where my home, my next home is, if you wanna shoot somebody, come and shoot me first. If my colleagues don't know, I'm not saying they don't, if they don't know my Lord and Savior, maybe that'll get somebody saved, but shoot me, hey, I'm ready to go. Just don't bother my wife, don't call my wife, don't ask my wife who, how I'm voting, don't call my daughter, don't text my daughter, they don't know how I'm voting. I vote for the best of our country, our city, our county, and everybody. Okay, I don't know all the facts, y'all don't know all the facts, you can sit out there all day long and tell me you do, but you don't. I know less than most of y'all know right now. I got a call three weeks ago, Friday, that this all was coming down, I didn't know it was coming down, but I got a call about it. Guy called me a liar, and he called me everything else in the sun, because I knew he may was having a meeting. I didn't know there was a meeting about any of this stuff. Come that Tuesday, we got our stuff, he texted me back that Saturday night, told me I had lost all respect for me and how I knowed all this was coming down, what all we was gonna do, I mean, you know, that's the way people do right there. But I just wish and hope and pray that we all- But I just wish, and hope, and pray that we all just get, if you don't know my Lord and Savior, get to know Him. Tell people about Him. I'll preach to you all day long, I'm not a preacher. But we can do better than what we doing. Lady right there is holding a sign up right now. If that said, "Hey, are you saved? Let me tell you how to get saved," we would be a whole lots better right now than what we doing. Let's let the process work its way out. That's all I'm asking. Putting our name up on a billboard all over Gaston, telling people to call us, well, I know what to do when somebody calls. If I don't want to answer, I just hang the phone up and keep my phone off. I don't know why you're spending money to having robo-calls, calling everybody in Gaston and around. I mean, that's not the way to do. I don't know why you set up a PAC, a useless PAC, to go against us all. That was useless to do that, if you want my opinion. If everybody would've came up here and we could've talked this thing over, instead of what we're doing right now, with signs and running through here, we would've been a whole lot better. Do you think, if I owned a business, and I wanted to bring a business to Gaston, Alabama, would I come right now? No. This would be the last place on earth, right now, I would bring a business to. And I don't think, you know, the people that owns business here, a lot of them, I don't think they appreciate all this. Because, you know, I heard on there, "Don't buy from people in Gaston." Well, that's just hurting people in Gaston. That's hurting their livelihood. That's putting food, uh, food on their table that they might not have. What has got into us? I don't know what has got into all y'all. But, you know, just because you live in Rainbow City, you can't say, "Hey, don't go to Gaston and buy." We're not going to Gaston to buy anything. If you live in a town, a south side, Rainbow City, wherever you live, you know, you're just hurting somebody else, you're not, you know, you're hurting city Gaston for one, but you're hurting a, a small business that might go out of business. You're hurting somebody that really needs that money, that's not going to get that money. Think about that. Think what time of year this is. Think about your Lord and Savior, and just think what you could do of all these people right here, just out here protesting, if we could get behind our Lord and Savior. And just think about that. Don't you go home and think about that? Don't threaten people to kill them, don't threaten people to shoot them. Like I say, if you want to shoot somebody, shoot me. Just call me, I'd be glad to come outside and let you shoot me, if that's what it takes to get a soul one to Christ. I don't care, I mean, I know where I'm going. And I'm really going to pray for all those people outside that's, that's hollering and carrying on right now, like they are, protesting. I'm going to really pray for them, and hope they'll take a message. Or just something I've said here today, remember what this season's all about. And please, just give it a rest, after we get through with our Christmas. We're not going to make any decisions. Just think about what season you're in. Think about what God done for you. Thank you. Oh, yeah, wait, I'm sorry, I've one more thing to bring up. Two of my colleagues voted no a while ago against a nuisance and abatement. I never hold anything against anybody for doing that. But they would've read a little bit there on this thing, the gentleman that came today, he didn't own the property, and his mom don't have the property right now. A man in Indiana owns the property with a right of redemption of. I hate, you know, tearing houses down, I don't want to tear houses down, but sometimes when it's been there four or five years, you've got, you know, you've got to know all the facts, know who owns the property. And you can check what Mr. Harbison, right of redemption means, the person that owned that house has the right to come back and get it. Will they come back and get it? I don't know. I don't want that gentleman to go out there and spend a lot of money on something that's not going to be his. I do have a heart, though.
Councilman Reed.
Whoa, I tell you what. Give him a good time, can't nobody out there listening, no way Jesus could come today and spit on him, so hey. If he's going to put a rendering plant in, for God's sakes. These guys are eloquent. They are. They said everything they wanted to say, and I agree with it. I agree with Johnny. Just one thing, Johnny, I carry, I ain't ready to go. You keep that in mind. I mean, you keep that in mind big time. All right? And I did, I spent five years overseas, 32 months, I learned how to take you out. That ain't real good, everybody up here. One man said he is in the paratroopers, one guy's in the army, this little hero's in the army. You know, we all served, and we all learned how to shoot, and we all got guns. I'm totally disappointed in Andrew Jones. I don't even say Senator anymore. That man raising money on one side, showing partiality. He's supposed to be representing the state of Alabama. And he's not here right now, he sneaked out, but I wish he was, I'll tell him if I can get to him in just a little while. But you know what? I get down to basics. Again, I agree with everybody up here, what they said. And I see all y'all out there, and I hope y'all got something out of this meeting. But I went through the texts, I've been through the signs, I've been through the T-shirts, I've been through it all. And you know what it's amounted to? When I left this morning, after 62 years married, my wife kissed me and wished I had nothing happened to me. That was a plus, and that's the only thing that's happened out of this thing. You people are barking, because I'm going to tell you what, there is a reckoning, bet on it. There is a defense, bet on it. And if your coat ain't clean, you better start running. That's all I got.
I would just like to start off by, we have rules of order. And in our rules of order, on the website, we have a request for a citizen to speak. If you put on there that you want to speak, then that's what you are allowed to do. If you put on there that you want to be a, do a presentation, then that's what you are allowed to do. So you can go there and make that request. I make no difference for, for anyone else, and I try my best to do what's right, but nobody out there is perfect, and I know that I'm not perfect. But I want to speak to the citizens of Gaston. I want to speak to the citizens of District 1 and District 2. I want to speak to the people that do not live that very far from me, live in my neighborhood. We are probably .5 miles from Cooks. And what it's about, they've talked about that, but it was about 10 or 12 years ago. And Mayor Taylor should remember that. You could smell Cooks or Tyson all over East Gaston, where there were three elementary schools, and there was churches. In fact, North Glenco Baptist Church is right down the street from Cooks. It smelled every time we stepped out of the door. There is a neighborhood over there, the industrial, near the industrial park that was put there, sound noise. What I'm saying to the citizens of Gaston, where are you? You've got all of these people that are living outside of Gaston, and I know Mayor Taylor said that we should lock arms and be together, but that's been tried. You know that. You, you know how it's about who's up here on this council? And it's about a small group of people outside of Gaston that's trying to run the city of Gaston. It's been like that for a while. And so I, I want to say that nobody came to our defense. We called the mayor, we came. Right now, there are big trucks that go into Cook now, they, people complain about that, 18-wheelers. But nobody out there has come to our defense. Nobody said anything about the stink and the smell. And there's someone in this audience that doesn't live that far, that's fighting this, that doesn't live that far from the chicken plant now. So if the stink was really the problem, then they wouldn't live that close to the chicken plant. But they do. 12 years, because somebody said to me, my neighbors, so all of you that are telling, telling the people in District 1 to call me, I'm telling you, do you smell the plant? Did they come and help you to get the smell out? Wake up citizens of Gaston, if you care about your community like they care about their community, where are you? There was a group up here fighting the city council about school money. Where are you? You had a group come up here who was fighting the city council because we wasn't paying jobs. They even had the nerve to say $9 an hour wasn't, wasn't enough money. When you don't have a job, that's plenty of money. So I, I'm saying that I would just like to really, really, really apologize to the council members, and especially one person that's not a council member. But I understand that he's taken a lot of heat, and that's Chad Hare, that works at the water board. I apologize for the things that's been happening to you all, you know, that's been happening to me. I, I, maybe I got tough skin. I guess, Deborah, because I graduated from Alabama A&amp;M, and I'm a bulldog, I ain't scared. But I'm going to vote for the best. I, as I said to a group before, you didn't elect me to be a puppet. You didn't let, you didn't elect me to dangle on a string for no particular interest group, and I'm not going to do that even today. I'm going to do what's right. I'm going to fight for justice, I'm going to fight for right. And hey, I've been beat over the head for the last three or four months, if it wasn't about this out there, now it's about that over there. But I'm going to stand my ground, from a woman, to all of you out there, to all of you out there, to the people in my district. You can call me, I will make a decision. I'm not going to go on Facebook Live, I'm not going to go on Facebook, but I'm going to do the right thing. So Gaston, where are you? Where are you? They're taking an interest in their community. Where are you, Gaston? Then you can ask them, where were you when we were fighting? When we were trying to get rid of the smell? And technology, technology got rid of it. So from 10 to 12 years, we have not even smelled, there may be some, we have not smelled the chicken plant. So I just say, what we need to do is to, as Cannon said, we need to be of good cheer. We need to do the right thing. We need to love each other, and care about each other, and not fight each other. I, I am, I'm embarrassed to know, but it's, you know what? You know what, Gaston? It's a lot of money that somebody has put in to fight this. So it must be a good plan coming here. Think about it, voters, when they fight that hard to keep you from voting, that means your vote counts. If they're fighting this hard to keep that plant from coming here, must be something good about it. Whether you think so or not, but you wasn't there for me, you wasn't there for the children in my community. So I'm going to stand up for my community, just like you're going to stand up for your community. And I call for a motion to be adjourned.